Thursday, July.
Recording in progress.
Welcome to the Thursday, July 2024 Council Meeting. We have President Bush online, so I'm going to coordinate in the room just so it's not awkward via Zoom. We do have a big agenda tonight, so let's get started. Call it with. Oh, I called the order. Sorry, sorry, sorry. Pledge allegiance. Let's do, um, stop this.
I pledge allegiance to the government of America.
I like the way it stands. One, and we got indivisible, indivisible.
Now, because roll call. Sorry, y'all.
Yeah, President Bush?
Here.
Vice President Rickards?
Here.
Councilmember Winston?
Here.
Councilmember Birock?
Here.
Councilmember Spear?
Here.
Councilmember Galdini?
Here.
Councilmember Salton?
Here.
Mayor Deutsch?
Here.
Great, I'll just make a couple notes of the agenda and then Fred, I'll toss it over to you in case you have any comments. Um, we are going to switch under Presentation Items. Um, Point A, we are going to do the 1399 Elmwood first, then we are going to move into Consideration Item H, move back to Presentation Items for the CIP Plan, just so these folks don't have to sit through our entire meeting. I will point out that we have two executive sessions. Um, we will come back after Point 10, looking at reviewing a lease renewal. At the end of the night, uh, we will end with an executive session and we will not be coming back for any vote or decision um, at that point. So, um, with that said, Fred, any comments?
Uh, just thanks, Cindy, for presenting over this nice meeting while I'm out of town.
Andrea, any mayor comment?
Just a couple things. Um, some of you may have noticed that Windsor Avenue is currently closed, that Forest Avenue, that's due to a downed tree. Uh, Pico is on site, uh, working to make sure it's safe. There are live wires there, so please stay away from that intersection and, um, go, go around it until it is opened up. As soon as it is safe to be cleared, um, it will be opened up. Um, secondly, if we are in the middle of vacation season, so just, uh, a usual reminder that if you are going away, we'd like the Narbuth Police Department to keep them out of your house. Uh, please call, leave a message for, uh, either Chief String or Sergeant Formatio, and, uh, and they will be sure to put it on their list to give it a little extra attention.
Great, that's it. Thanks. Let's start with community boards, FNA.
Thanks, uh, President's Administration. We have pretty much finished our review of Rules of Council. Uh, we have a working draft and over the next month, we hope to, uh, put together a draft to introduce a council, just to view, uh, the August meeting and maybe have just a short presentation on what our recommendations were. Um, not for approval at that time, but just to, uh, get feedback from council members and take a pack if necessary, continue work on. So, hope to have that ready at the August meeting. And we have been continuing our review of boards and commissions, of, um, the volunteers and vacancies and, uh, what we can, what we can do about tightening up boards and commissions and, and keeping them staffed with volunteers and making them feel valued and, um, productive. Uh, that will be continuing for a couple of months due to, uh, just a couple of factors of getting in touch with people and, uh, getting them into a finance meeting. Other than that, not much. But that's a lot.
Thanks. And for start here?
Uh, we did not meet last month. Um, we are meeting on Tuesday, next Tuesday, and then at our August meeting, we're going to have a presentation from Panoni about, let's see, MS4, the stormwater?
Yeah.
To get us all up to date on that.
Great, thanks. Public comment, Cindy?
Uh, so we had, um, we're continuing to work with the staff on the amended plastic ordinance communications rollout. Um, Public Works also, uh, is working on installing the O A stop at W and Fright. Um, that's, actually, did that already happen today? I think, I think they were initially saying July 18th, just today. Um, and then we also had the traffic engineer from Panoni come and we had a discussion on the stormwater bump outs on Iona Avenue. Um, we asked Panoni to provide some preliminary cost estimates for the plan, uh, which were amounted to about $180,000. So, um, they were also in communication with the, the fire department and the fire marshal had some concerns, so there was some back and forth about that. So, um, revising the plans does reduce the cost a little bit, maybe by $30,000. And then, um, so we discussed whether the stormwater management, um, plan at this location was optimal and, um, and then I think we said the traffic engineer would assess the MS4 impact for that location. Um, and we also discussed, had a general discussion about alternative solutions to reduce cut through traffic on Iona Avenue. And we had a mainline greenway update. Uh, we're continuing to work with Lower Marion Township, uh, and the design consultant on the signage and the pavement markings. Uh, Narbuth is planning to install both pavement markings and signage on the route. Um, and that was pretty much it for public health and safety. I do have an update for Master Park Plan. Um, so this study committee held its second meeting on July 10th, and Simone Collins was there to provide an update on the public engagement process. Uh, they're continuing to collect the survey responses. Over 400 responses, uh, have been collected to date. And, um, everyone's working really hard, including Michael, to collect, to get a good survey response. And there's currently some underrepresentation from minorities and renters and the younger demographics, so we're working on that. Um, and the key person interviews are also underway and, uh, stakeholder and engagement sessions, they're being scheduled for August and September, uh, early September. And so, and then Simone Collins provided and presented the initial preliminary concepts for Elm Grove Park, Narbuth Park, and Station Square. And so we discussed those concepts at the meeting. I encourage everyone to watch the meeting. Um, and Alan, have those concepts been posted on the website yet?
Yeah, they're on the Master Park Plan page and as well as the recording and the presentation. Um, so everything's up now.
Okay, so if anyone wants to see the concepts or learn what the schedule is, it's all uploaded on the webpage. Um, the main thing that came out of that meeting was also the committee expressed some concern. Right now, the schedule is that, um, the study committee will meet again in August 14th, and then Simone Collins will present the feedback from the stakeholders and the key person interviews in September, September 11th. Um, however, they were looking for some general direction from the committee before then to, um, on which direction to take for both Narbuth Park and, uh, Elm Grove Park. However, we didn't have any of the, the stakeholder interview data or the key person interview data, so, um, we expressed some concern about the timing. So, um, Alan, Michael, and Rebecca, Rebecca Moore, and I met with Simone Collins yesterday to talk about the schedule, and they had presented a schedule that would add a public meeting, um, but also add an additional cost. So, we were concerned about the additional cost. So, we kind of scaled that back to, um, keep it to the same number of meetings, but move the timeline a little bit further down so that we, we would have the opportunity to capture that feedback. Um, and so, um, should we, um, so the next, the public session, the public, um, meeting for the Master Park Plan, for the concepts to be, um, presented to the public, is scheduled for October 9th. Um, and then, um, we will have two study committee meetings before then. And, um, everyone can look at the webpage for the rest of the, I'm not going to go through the whole timeline, but, um, it will go through Planning Commission, Borough Council, and then looking at approval from Borough Council in January or February. I can't remember where we ended. Um, early next year. Thank you.
And that was it. That's an extraordinary amount of work that you two have done.
Thank you.
Great. Anything, anything else? Let's move to public comment. I'll remind folks that it's 1:53 minutes in comment only, so we won't engage with Q and A. I'll start in the room. Well, ask online?
Yeah, Carol Marie, do you want to go ahead?
Yes, I would like to. Um, so Mike, I have several questions. Um, one of them actually is for the, for Jen, for the Park Plan meetings. It seems that the majority of them are in the summertime and a lot of people are away. Would you maybe back one up before you have the big meeting and discussing the results of the little meetings and have it in September, you know, back it up a month so people that are away in the summertime have a chance to get to the meeting?
Carol Marie, we're not going to do Q and A, but you do have two and a half minutes for comment.
All right, and my next public comment is, um, has the RFP for 201 Sabine or Sabine Park been written or sent out? And since you're not answering, I'll continue. And I'm wondering, has any council member spoken to a developer about the building, developing, construction, or development of any part of 201 Sabine and the Sabine property? And again, um, has affordable housing for any open property in Narbuth or any part of the 201 Sabine property been discussed by council members amongst themselves and with the Planning Commission or any developers? And those are concerns that I have, and I would like to know how we can get answers to those questions.
Great, thank you, Carol Marie. I encourage you to email council members or attend committee meetings.
And I should add that Ms. Scanlon did do a write to note request for all those communications and those were provided to her as well. So if there was any communications pertaining to those questions, it would have been provided.
Great, thanks, Mr. Walco. Okay, moving on, do we have any?
My question is, has there been any other, since then, communications?
Thank you, Carol Marie. Um, your time is up. Alan, do we have anyone else online?
Anyone else online, if you want to make a comment, just speak up. Doesn't looks like, no. Not sure who Google Pixel 8 is, but.
Okay, well, if Google is not raising their hand, we're going to move on to Presentation Items. Again, as noted, we will begin with Elmwood at a flat line application.
Right. I'm happy to do.
Mr. Walco?
Sure, I'm happy to do. This is later again on the agenda for consideration. Um, this is a request, um, of the applicant who is the equitable owner of 13 Elmwood Avenue, um, that being Rayor Sexton Homes, who has that property, I believe, under a potential purchase agreement with the current landowner of that property and, uh, one, two, three, four properties over, um, the Spinellis, uh, who are the owner of 99 Elmwood Avenue. Um, 13 Elmwood Avenue is a pre-existing non-conforming flag lot. And by a flag lot, it means if you look at it on a plan, there is about a 10-foot entryway frontage on Elmwood that goes back to a larger property, creating that idea of a flag pole. The flag pole backs up into a significant rear yard of 99 Elmwood Avenue, which also has that similar flag shape, but the frontage on Elmwood is conforming, meaning it's wide enough that you could have a house on Elmwood. So that's not a non-conforming lot. The proposal is to sort of cut off the flag, I'm sorry, that's what's being proposed to have happened. The 13 Elmwood actually goes all the way past the rear of all these properties. The proposal is to create what would be a, a, a larger looking flag lot for 99 Elmwood Avenue, but still conforming, and shorten the flag of 13 in the rear. So the rear lot line of 13 will back up to sort of the back left side of 99. Um, 99 Elmwood Avenue would be conforming as to size. We're not creating nonconformities with this. The, uh, nonconformity that's existing for 13 Elmwood Avenue, uh, is, remains unchanged. And quite frankly, there isn't anything you could really do to get rid of that nonconformity unless they were to purchase and consolidate 15 Elmwood, which isn't for sale. Because again, anything that's happening in the back of that lot doesn't really have anything to do with the conformity. Um, no development is proposed as part of, uh, this, uh, this subdivision. So it is really just creating that line off of the back of 99 Elmwood to, to separate those large lots in the back. Um, the, it would be expected then that a single-family dwelling would then be proposed to be built at a later time, which likely won't come before council because it would just be through a building permit in the rear of 13 Elmwood, utilizing that flag area for a driveway. Where that house or how that house would be situated would probably, it's probably going to need zoning relief, uh, simply because our code really, um, is dictated by the frontage of the house. And it's unclear because there is no frontage, where the frontage would be. Um, but, uh, there are, would be conditions later on, uh, in the, the resolution that for both 99 and 13, uh, if they're not allowed, they wouldn't be able to claim any hardships as a result of the subdivision. So they can't, they can't cut down the line, make the lot smaller, and say, I need help on my impervious because I don't have enough lot. Um, but again, that, that's, that shouldn't be something that, um, is proposed here. Technically, what you're doing is then taking a 30,602, um, square foot non-conforming lot and then, um, reducing that to 20,000 feet, given that approximately 10,000 feet more to 99. So that's what's, what's being proposed. It's really just with drawing that line in the back, making 99 bigger, 13 smaller. Both would remain conforming as to size. And, um, the applicant is here with his council if there are any technical questions.
Any questions from council?
I guess the only question is, is this something where the adjoining neighbors are all notified and given an opportunity to weigh in, or how does that work procedurally?
Well, uh, under the municipal planning code, it's not a zoning application. So there, there wouldn't be requirement to provide notice to them. Um, obviously, 99 is a neighboring entity, uh, towards the back of, um, of 13. Uh, there are three lots in between. I'm not sure, I mean, if the applicant knows if there's been any discussion or any communications with any of the neighbors, but, uh, no, there wouldn't be any formal notice of, of tonight for those neighbors.
Um, I noticed, uh, watching the Planning Commission meeting from this month, the applicant did go before Planning Commission and Planning Commission declined to give them a recommendation out of way. Uh, so the two questions I have, one is, are we legally bound to, uh, take a recommendation from Planning Commission before we approve a lot line change? And this, sorry.
I guess, no, there's no legal requirement that a recommendation be made, uh, simply that it be, uh, going to the Planning Commission for their consideration.
And then I guess the second question, I'm just wondering about it. It, it would be normal to, uh, at least address a, an, a housing application or a building application at the same time of a lot line change? Just to consider what could go on that lot, uh, and that that sort of get chewed through Planning Commission at least a little bit before it comes to us, so.
I mean, in my experience, it's, it's very common and it's usually the normal that you just do the subdivision because oftentimes the people don't know what's going to be built on that.
Yeah, you don't have to pay the money on plans.
And, and it could be you do a subdivision if it's your property and then later on try to find someone else to buy a property.
But in this case, since it's a non-conforming lot, they're taking a little risk because they're not quite sure what might be approved there ultimately.
They have a opinion from the borough that it can be used for a single-family residential lot. The law says you have to be able to use your property, um, and this property is, is zoned for a single-family residential use. So they would be able to, to, to have that use. The question would be, you know, to the extent of variance relief, they need to make that use happen. Um, they would claim a hardship. It looks like they have elements of a hardship because it's a non-conforming lot. Now, the question would be whether or not they are doing more than they need to do in order to meet the hardship. And that would be before the zoning hearing board if they were to, uh, you know, develop, uh, that, that lot at a later time. Again, I think that the, the, my guess is they are going to need to go before the zoning hearing board because no matter what you do, you still won't have that frontage. Um, and, but really, the, the orientation or the size of the, of the house is not going to impact, you know, that, that hardship with the frontage. But, um, it is, it is usual for there to not be known what would happen on that subdivided lot. Um, if there was something proposed at this time with the subdivision, that would turn more to a land development and a subdivision at the same time. Um, and then usually that happens when the, when the person is building and, uh, dividing at the same time. But it's not what's happening here.
Any other questions? Fred? Crush, any questions, comments?
If I can add one more thing, I think there was some, some discussion about the references in our SADO, or maybe it was the zoning code related to flag lots. And again, this is a pre-existing flag lot and certainly our code, if someone came in today and wanted to make a flag lot, our code would not let them do that. And that's what I think the code is set to address. Um, but again, Case Long, Pennsylvania says that as long as you're not increasing the nonconformity, then, um, you should be able to have that right to develop on your property. All other, all other issues of the codes being involved.
All right. Okay, then hearing now their comments or questions, I'm going to move to Consideration Item H and move us to a vote. I'm looking for the motion sheet. I can't see whose motion that is. So I will just take, uh, a volunteer to, to move that we vote on, uh, Consideration Item H. Alan?
I'm making a motion to approve Resolution 2024-14 for a lot line change application regarding 13 slash 91, 99 Elmwood Avenue.
Great, you have a second?
Second.
Perfect. Any further to stop? Okay, let's take a vote on Action Item E. That's moved. All those in favor? I see unanimous seven. Great, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, let's move back to Presentation Items to our draft five-year capital improvement plan. Mr. Last.
Clearing room, man.
Of course, the room like a bunch of presentation.
Yep. All right. I'm going to share this. You can screen share if you want to do that way. Saying drinks and, yeah, we should have rehearsed this.
Yeah, I was scrolling back and forth to trying to write the motion.
And you know what? It looks like there's not anyone assigned anyway, so it does not.
Just only, uh.
Yeah, it's like under pressure.
I know, but wasn't like, I wasn't, I was only to move. I just was trying to find.
Well, I'm, I'm hearing that kind of roaring noise. Is it the air conditioning that just came on or?
Yeah, it's the AC, Fred.
You get past the Mr. 57 degrees.
Well, hopefully, once, uh, once Matt starts talking, the mic will home in on him and I won't get the ambient so much.
Go. All right. Okay. Thank you.
I am really excited to share the draft capital improvement plan with council and members of the public this evening. Uh, tonight's presentation is a result of a good four months' worth of work from staff as well as coordinating with committees of council and having independent, uh, small group meetings with council. Um, I'm really excited about this plan and excited to have this opportunity to share it with the group tonight. Why do we do this capital improvement plan? What's it about? Why is it important? Why have we been investing four months' worth of, granted, that's not all we've been doing, but four, four months' worth of staff time and council interaction? I like to distill it down to six, uh, six takeaway points. It enables us to practically manage all known costs to minimize variability. That's the first thing. If we know these things, we can better plan for them. Prioritization of capital needs. Not all capital needs are created equal. While it's on a capital needs list, it not, is not necessarily, you know, one is not necessarily less important than the other one. It enables us to better track what the financial effects of future projects and assets are. It helps us identify and secure funding, which is important, as you'll see later in this presentation. It's a large number. Capital plans typically are large numbers, so I want to keep reiterating that. It's okay. Just breathe deeply, it'll be okay. We, we will, we will get through this. It helps reduce, uh, emergency repairs and replacement. Why is that important? Because those costs are amazingly much higher than being proactive. If you're paying for an emergency repair to, you know, let's use the example of a sewer main, you are going to pay probably twice as much as if you pay for it proactively on a routine scheduled replacement. So it helps us reduce those, those costs. And the last one is arguably maybe even the most important. It helps us, the borough, maintain and/or improve our quality levels of service, quality of life. It helps us maintain those things that the borough is responsible to maintain, all of these big capital items. So though I, I could distill a capital improvement plan down to those six bullet points. Before I get into this, I think it's important for us to know that this capital plan does not include these six things. These are important things. Annual road paving program. This capital improvement plan does not include an annual road paving program. Why? Matt, paving roads is a large capital expense. Yes, I know. Why is because we manage and maintain our road, annual road paving program separately. We have a different fund through which we fund that, and we have a, a separate road paving program or road paving plan. If you remember, I developed that back in, when I was here previously, and we continued to build off of that with support from the borough engineer. You're going to see that this year's road paving program, which we're going to be doing, Havford and, um, Shirley, I'm sure, yeah, Shirley Road.
Not Circle.
Maybe Circle, but borough will not be paying for that. That's included in the annual road paving plan. So that's not included in this plan. Also not included is any expense related to 201 Sabine. Why? That is a significant capital responsibility for, uh, the borough. Because there are ongoing discussions in plans for 201 Sabine, as has been defined prior to my tenure, I thought it was best if we just push the pause button on 201 Sabine until we get this council to give a better understanding and direction of what, where we want to go um, with future investments in 201 Sabine. It also does not include the Narbuth Avenue Bridge. Yes, the Narbuth Avenue Bridge is paid for out of the capital fund, capital C and capital F. However, it is in a segregated fund. We manage that, those costs separately outside of our capital improvement operated fund. We manage that, those costs separately outside of our capital improvement operating fund. Those expenses, as you're well aware, we are on the hook for 5% of those costs or design costs. When a bill comes in, the borough is on the hook to pay for those 100% and then we get reimbursement for up to 95%. So it's a cash flow issue. So it's good to have a nice chunk of money, you'll see that later in tonight's presentation. We currently have just under $400,000 in a fund, in an operating cash account specifically designed for the Norberth Avenue Bridge expenses. It also doesn't include fire equipment. Much like our annual road paving program, fire equipment, yes, it is Fund 30, it has its own cash account. That is segregated because it has interaction between the borough and the fire department and that is managed separately. We really do defer to the fire department on their prioritization of needs for fire equipment replacement. Excuse me. It also doesn't include parks-related capital expenses. Why is that? What's happening right now? What are we doing? Councilman Burek announced that we have this master park plan. I thought it was premature to include any significant park investments in this capital improvement plan without knowing what the recommendations are gonna be as a result of the master park plan. Nor does it include, lastly, any sewer fund, small-scale capital improvements. If you remember, this council authorized the increase of this year's sewer rates to help us identify, maintain, and make these small-scale capital expense improvements to our existing sewer infrastructure. Most of the things that we need to update with our sewer system can be handled through the sewer fund. There are those things, there are those items that are large in scales, you'll see one on the capital improvement plan that are significant sewer main replacements, they will end up on the CIP. So those six things are not included in this CIP. So what is a capital expense? If a thing meets both of these criteria, it is qualified as a capital expense. It has to have a one-time cost of $5,000 or more and it has to have an estimated lifespan of two years or more. It's gotta hit both of those, it's not an if or, it's an and, it has to meet both of those. So, staff started this process. We thought of everything that we had, that the borough owns, that we know about, that any issues that we know having to do with facilities, having to do with roadways, having to do with parks, having to do with anything you name it, right? We included it. That became the master inventory list. If those things met both of those criteria, it went on the master inventory list. That master inventory list was then brought through the committee structure, reviewed, got some feedback, edited, updated, brought to the committees, reviewed. It then went to small group meetings with council and the mayor, if you remember that, a couple of months ago, where we had one-on-one meetings, we spent a couple of hours with each other going over the details of the capital plan. And then it generated, I generated that master inventory list into a full written report. This presentation is a summary of that written report. That written report is not public yet. This is the first step for that document to become public. Presenting it tonight, after tonight, with council's blessing, it'll become a public document and then my recommendation is for council to take official action no later, no earlier than the August business meeting, where you will actually take consideration to adopt this capital improvement plan. So, that started in January, I'm hoping it ends in August. Remember that timeframe, because that timeline in the vision of a capital improvement plan will repeat itself on an annual basis, it seemed to go over here like this, right? Every year, January to August, it's wash, rinse, repeat. This year's arguably gonna be the most difficult because we built the framework. The framework, it took a significant amount of time to build this framework. I'm really excited about the maintenance and the ongoing maintenance of the capital improvement plan because the framework has been built. Now it's just gonna be tweaking the system, adding things to the inventory list that we identified as a result of the master park plan, anything else that pops up throughout the year. I highlight that master inventory list because that is, that is the, the living, breathing document that makes the capital improvement plan work. That thing is supposed to be reviewed and updated on a daily basis. That's accessible to staff when things pop up that we hadn't thought of, because remember, this capital improvement plan, this master inventory list, is a snapshot in time. All known things that we know, that we can think of as of right now. Chances are, even tomorrow, next week, next month, someone might say, hey, what about such and such? Oh yeah, that's right, hmm, that's a capital expense, put it in the master inventory list. So I want council to get comfortable with this timeline because you're gonna see it again next year. Why? Because, remember, this process, the capital improvement plan, is not a funding document. It is not binding you to commit X amount of dollars to pay for these things. This is a planning document, this is to provide you all information to make better decisions. Why do I have this slide up here? Because, what is the funding document, capital T, capital F, capital D? The budget. Capital T, capital B, the budget. That is your funding document. Our capital fund and our capital plan is a child of the budget. So if you remember, this year, in this year's operating budget, there was no general fund dollars allocated to the capital fund. So the capital fund is existing by itself with no additional inflows from the existing general fund. So that annual budget then, the capital plan, is one of three things that we use to make a better budget. This is one of those things that we plug in and say, okay, here's our capital plan, what needs do we have for this next year? How many of those things does council want to fund? That becomes the conversation through the budget process. Also included in the budget process is the funding requests. These are funding requests from internal, from borough-related agencies, fire department, library, you know, Fourth of July activities, those sorts of things. Also, our annual operating expenses. Those are the things that we review on a monthly basis, those things that we don't have much control over, how much does it cost to turn the lights on, flush the toilet, those sorts of things, those operating expenses. All of those things added together equals that annual budget. So every year, council will have the opportunity to evaluate, prioritize, and choose to fund. That's your decision. And so that's gonna happen, I know, can't believe it, budget season is right around the corner, you're gonna start seeing me talk about the budget next month, starting in August, all the way down through December 31st is the state-mandated due date. So through the process, we've developed this master inventory list. Through a couple of the interactions with council committees, this process was developed to help us create a more objective ranking system for all of the capital improvement items. I want to send a special shout-out to Councilman Gaudini who helped craft this. Really appreciate your time and dedication to this and it really was that missing link for the capital improvement plan to make it that much more usable. So each item that we have on the master inventory list, we're then assigned different scores for these different criteria. There's the cost factor, savings factor, health and safety factor, impact factor, regulatory compliance factor, and then the other consideration is a bonus. If there was one that was right on the border that council says, hey, you know what, council or staff says, you know what, this is right on the border, I'd like to boost it to get it up to the next priority because it is, it really should be considered by council, that's what that criteria is. I'm not gonna read through each one of those criteria, it's included in the draft capital improvement plan for those who want to do a deep dive. So, each item has a total possible score of 25. That's the total, that's the highest score that you can, that each, that any item could get. It resulted in 86 unique items that sits within our master inventory list. Using that scoring prioritization, each of those 86 items were given a score, 14 of which came in at low, 18 medium-low, 27 medium, 20 high, 20 medium-high, and 7 high. This draft CIP includes the 27 items that are medium-high and high. So the next slide, we're gonna look at that capital improvement plan, that's the five-year plan, 27 items. Within those 27 items, that, those 27 items were further identified as being those that are urgent, those are the things that, you know what, we really need to do this regardless of whether or not we have the funding, we need to secure funding ASAP, versus those things that are non-urgent, those things that could be deferred, that, yeah, we really should keep our eye on it and chances are they will fail in the upcoming years, but you know what, conditions are for this year, I think it'll last another year. Keep it on the inventory list, keep it in the capital improvement plan, so we don't have a sense of urgency to find dollars to fund that. So what does it look like? I know it's hard to see on the screen and I'm going to point everybody to the draft CIP on our website once we post it tomorrow, where it becomes a lot more legible. What you're gonna see is those items...
Is there any way to expand that a little bit, maybe a little bigger?
Yes.
Just the whole thing at once.
Yeah.
All right, so this is what it looks like. Okay, you've got the fund, the CIP item number, which is a unique internal identifier, your title, and then really what we're looking at are these columns to the right of 2024. 2024 are those projects that are currently underway. We're looking at 2025 to 2029. Those items that are highlighted as yellow have been identified as non-urgent. All right, such as replace drinking fountain with compliant fixtures in this facility. In coordination with, excuse me, our, the borough's code enforcement officer, yes, we need to do that, but we don't need to do that until we do significant alterations at this building. That's at the time that we would need to do that. Any of those code-compliant items, that's the same answer. We don't need to do that until we decide to do significant renovations at this building. Okay? I'm not gonna go through each one of those, just in the interest of time, but that's how it's designed and I encourage everybody to do a deep dive on the draft CIP, to get into it, to review it, it's much more legible, you can see it, you don't have to zoom in like this, it's easier to read. Okay? Remember, I'm gonna say it again, CIP is not a funding document. Say it one more time, CIP is not a funding document. I know, being in your positions before, when you see a plan that makes a recommendation for such a significant amount of money, it gives you some heart palpitations, I understand that, I get it, but it's okay. I'm, I'm cut from a cloth and I would rather know what we, what we're on the hook for, to know so it's not surprising. Just because the money is showing that it's a significant chunk of change doesn't necessarily mean we are obligated to, to fund those things immediately. This is a planning document. This will help us secure additional funding to make sure that we can start doing those large items in the future. So how do we fund it? Well, we've got the existing fund balance, we've got possible transfers from the general fund. Remember, capital fund is a child of the general fund. We do not have any dedicated tax millage associated, assigned to the capital fund. And then the third, grant funding. Grant funding is really difficult for me to plan for because, as Al and I were talking about, the capital improvement plan, we'd be able to find a grant for everything on the master inventory list. You just don't know what grants are available at any given time. Grants are also fickle. It's a timing issue. Grant windows only come up at a certain time of the, time of year. Right, so, yes, we want to always make sure that we are positioned well to secure grant funding. The timing of grants and the management of grants really does limit the success of us doing a significant amount of that funding at one time. I also want to reiterate, since this is a planning document and not a funding document, any item that is included on the capital plan will always come before council for consideration, for review, discussion, prior to approval. Right? Just because it's on the capital plan doesn't give, give me borough staff the green light to just go and start spending this money. It's not how it works. This is what we believe we need to do. Once we've identified in, let's say, let's use 2025 as an example, we, we are recommending one, two, three different projects, those one, two, three different projects will come before council, you will then take, consider it, have that background information and take action on it at that time. Right? Since this is a planning document, I thought it appropriate to provide council some scenarios of how we could go about funding a capital improvement plan. So I've included four different scenarios for both tracks, unintended, for both tracks. We've got the entire capital improvement plan and then we've got only the urgent items. That's included in the draft CIP. Four scenarios. First one, no additional money, just use the existing capital fund, fund balance for all items or for just the urgent items. Scenario two, use the existing fund balance and, let's say, a one-time generous transfer of general fund dollars. That's scenario two. Scenario three, both of those things and an annual general fund transfer. One big chunk and then maybe, you know, subsequent smaller chunks in every following year. Scenario four, all of those things plus an estimated grant revenue opportunity. That's a difficult thing to plan for. So what I did in scenario four, I used a 50%, let's say, in an ideal world, it's aspirational, we get grants to fund all of the capital expenses for 2025. Most grants have a 50-50 local match, right? Local match will be on the hook for 50%. So from a forecasting scenario, I used a 50% best-case scenario. That scenario four is best-case, right? It's probably not the most realistic, but it's best-case to show you that, look, if we, if council says, look, we don't want to go through with any funding of the capital fund without getting grants, then we could apply that 50% because we know that council will be, that the borough will be on the hook for 50% of that. So, all items. Here is the worst-case scenario. And this one shows if we wanted to fund all of the items included in the capital plan and just use capital operating to fund balance. Look, we can get through 2025, but look what happens 2026 and onward. Things go off the rails pretty quickly. Okay? So that's number one. If you see, now the next one is with a one-time cash infusion from the general fund. Oh, it looks better in 2025, looks better, but still, 2026 and onward, things go off the rails. Here is a one-time transfer and additional general fund transfers on an annual basis, looks even better. But really, what makes it sing is scenario four. This really, I believe, illustrates the need for us to make sure that we secure grants. We cannot do this without grant funding and council needs to understand that. We can't fully fund this capital improvement plan without securing significant grant funding. And that's what scenario four tries to illustrate. If we go to that aspirational level and say, look, we expect that we will be able to get grants for everything, we'll be on the hook for 50% of it, then our capital improvement plan is fully funded over these next five years. All right, so that's the total capital improvement plan, all items. And then the next four are the same scenarios and just using those urgent items. See, I'm not gonna spend much time, it gets a lot better, as you can imagine, we've reduced that total number... As you can imagine, we've reduced that total number of projects significantly. Gets better with a one-time transfer. And then here's a, a one-time transfer and, and additional general fund transfers of $150,000 a year, we actually get it out to 2026. And then look at this, scenario four. I said, let's just give half of that significant general fund transfer, reduce it in half, and then bump up the annual contributions by $20,000, and you have a fully funded capital improvement plan for the urgent items only. Again, these are, this is not binding, this is not saying that this is what we are going to do. These are just scenarios for council to understand how we are going to then fund this as part of the budget-making process. In closing, this annual CIP process, you're going to start hearing this again next year, about the same time, we're going to keep that master inventory list, that's a continuous process, we're going to keep that updated as we complete projects, as we identify projects. That is the living, breathing document. It'll then get into a draft CIP, and then every draft CIP, we're just going to move that number, the column over, so next year's will be 2026 to 2023. We're always looking at that next year's column. In any CIP, the further you get outside of that next column, all bets are off. We really want to focus on 2025. And then it links into that operating budget, annual basis. That's it. That is a fast introduction to capital improvement planning. I encourage everyone to do a more deeper dive in that, in the document that we will make public starting tomorrow, and I look forward to continuing this discussion with council, and hoping to have council consider it at the August business meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we go around and just take an opportunity for even just questions or comments? I mean, I want to applaud you, Matt, not only on the collaborative process that you really outlined, but just how you built a framework that is discipable from, for council and citizens, and that if you win the lottery tomorrow and, and, you know-
Sure.
-buy an island, someone can come in and you've built a really clear framework, and that is the stability and the transparency and that I personally have really wanted to see in council, and I, I really appreciate your work on that.
Thank you. And I look forward to segueing this into the budget, and I envision a similar process with, with budget. So it's going to be like a similar process, similar criteria, that then, every year, it's the same process over and over. You then, I can manage expectations with council and the public, and it becomes that much easier to navigate. So thank you.
And you made this easier for us, because when people say, where is money going? I mean, this is one really clear-
Yep.
... tool that we, we can use. Can I just go around and take questions, comments, maybe? Fred, let's start with you, since you're on Zoom.
Yeah, I do want to thank you again, Matt, for working in all of our, all of our comments, all of our points, and incorporating the, the urgent, and the, oh, I don't know, there's a number of different changes that have been made to this since we saw the initial draft, so thanks there. And, I mean, it's important to put this in perspective. I've been pointing out for a couple of years now, the, some of the stormwater projects, these bump outs that we've committed to, and how they need to be accounted for in the budget, and it's, it's good to finally see them accounted for. I feel a lot better. Because, you know, it's been hanging over us for a while, that we have these improvements we need to make, and we, we're not really accounting for them until now, so. Thank you, Matt.
Just go around, questions and comments?
I'll go down.
I'll go first. I'll start with you.
So just, thank you for doing this. It does clarify, you know, a lot of questions about managing a borough. With the grant opportunities, and we, you took the, the best-case scenario with all of them, what happens if we get, you know, 75% of the best case?
And that goes into, right, this is the beauty of doing this on an annual basis.
Yeah.
We don't know what the grant funding will be, we don't know what other projects will come up. We'll integrate that into next year's, hey, actually, check it out, we actually got 75%. Look at what this does to our funding scenario, and those funding scenarios will then be updated.
And a second question with regard to grants. If we, if we get, see a grant that will fit one of our, one of our objectives, but maybe not for a little ways out, can we apply for those grants earlier and, and hold on to the money for a year? Or do those grants, are they required to be used kind of within a-
Good question. Every grant has their own specific requirements.
Okay.
Depending upon who the grantor is, they determine what the criteria is. Many of them, like if it's a larger-scale grant, many of them do have a multi-year ability to, you know, it has to be done within three years. I'm just going to throw that out there.
Okay.
It depends. It depends on the number of, there's just too many variables to give a really clear answer. It depends.
So depending on the grant, we might possibly get money and, and foresee that, how we can manage it three years out, or two years out, depending on the timeframe?
So, as many of you have heard me say, grants are like coupons. When you go to the grocery store, coupons are designed to get you in the grocery store and spend money on things that you don't normally buy. Grants are similar. Everybody wants grants, and oftentimes, we go after grants that we might not necessarily have budgeted for. What I like to do is have a framework, a capital improvement plan, that says, look, these are the things that we need. Now, staff has a, a guiding light, the bible of capital improvement plans, that now we can go and find grants for them. And we know we've budgeted for it, we've expected for that, and we can, it, grantors would be more inclined to award us because we have a plan.
Good idea.
Right?
All right. Thanks.
Yeah, so I mean, just one point, Matt and I discussed this before, so it won't surprise him that I'm going to say this, and I do appreciate, you know, that he listens to things, to feedback that was provided to him. But I think there are certain projects on this plan that we would never do without grant funding. Like, it's just, we're, you know, it's, it's just, it's the kind of thing that would be great to do if there was a grant fund available for certain kind of projects, but we probably wouldn't, you know, you know, spend, necessarily spend borough money on, you know, on, on some of these things. And so that, I just think we have to keep that in mind as we go through, that certain things may be very attractive grant targets. And, you know, and we should, you know, we should focus on them, because there's a lot of expense here. And so that, I bring this up in that context. Like, I mean, if you think about, like, things that aren't even on here, like, you know, Master Park and those kind of things, we're going to need to heavily rely on, you know, grant funding for those other projects, because otherwise, it just adds to this, you know, to the bottom line.
Yeah, to your point, there's not an operational cost that's quantifiable with grants.
I agree. Thank you.
Yeah, and the, and especially as it, you know, you had already covered that, like, having this makes us more competitive for the grants, because we're able to demonstrate that we've given thought to our priorities in terms of our capital needs.
Yes.
And I also think that this is helpful in the other, because we all know that it takes a lot of y'all's time to manage grants when we do get them.
Yes.
And so this provides us with a prioritization of the sorts of things that, you know, we can prioritize, y'all's time to managing grants for things that we need, but super helpful with that. I just think, and I want to echo Cindy's comments earlier, in terms of, like, this actually provides, you know, bones to a thing that was very amorphous before, and helps stabilize it, and provides an institution that hopefully outlooks all of us, and so that folks can come in and not have to recreate the kind of things from scratch. So you've done the yeoman's work in terms of getting that up to speed and just creating that living inventory. So really, really appreciate your time to do it with that. And it also is helpful for us in terms of being able, like, having, knowing what the thought process is, and so if you have questions about any individual thing, there's already been a thought process to why that thing ran highly, and so it just helps explain to us and you can help explain to others. Thank you for all of your process.
Thank you.
I, I really do appreciate, appreciate the capital improvement plan as a planning document, because it allows council to see kind of the bigger picture of all of the, the things that we can invest in, and the prioritization of that. Instead of things coming in just kind of willy-nilly, and things moving up in terms of, for, um, reasons, and so it really helps us make decisions over to, what to prioritize first. And I really do appreciate your scoring system, and I think that, that really helps the prioritization to us.
Agreed.
Really amazing. Thanks for all your work.
Thanks. Yeah, I want to, I'll echo all the thanks for your work on this, and diligence, and keeping this all informed, step by step. Particularly, you know, as a new council member, I really appreciate seeing this all laid out in front of me. I feel spoiled, you know? Like, so much information is so clearly laid out, it's, it's, it's great to see that. So I would share in the question, if there is a question. Well, first, I also appreciate the, the scenarios that show that these are realistic, you know, these are realistic goals, these are realistic priorities, entering funding. But when it comes time to fund the, the Master Park Plan recommendations, you know, will there be, you know, is, is the grant outlook still as rosy, you know, for, for getting grants for, for the CIP, and then grants for the Master Park? Are we asking too much from the grants? Do they cut us off at a certain point? I don't believe so. Okay. So there is a realistic scenario where we fund more than the-
So long as grants are available.
Yes.
And it's a, it, it could become a timing issue.
Yeah.
It might not be within a five-year window, you know, but we can start chipping away at these things.
Yeah.
And that's the beauty of doing this on an annual basis, that you can then identify new project. We're going to have a boatload of recommendations, I guess, or my, I expect, from the Master Park Plan that will need to be integrated into, into this plan. So that's, that's the beauty of us not, you know, setting it and forgetting it for the next five years. Let's do it on an annual basis.
Agreed.
The risk of being redundant, thanks.
This is a huge amount of work. I hope the public appreciates how much work it was by you. I, two things that really strike me is, I really appreciate the matrix that Michael came up with, because I think it, at the very front end, forces us, and I think overall, this really forces us to be disciplined, you know? We get accused occasionally of wanting to fund pet projects, et cetera, and this really lays out all the needs of the borough and, you know, not the day-to-day costs, but the kinds of things that are not pet projects, but real needs, and it forces us to be disciplined. The matrix forces us to be disciplined, you know? Each of us can come up with our own score, and where in 0 to 25 it comes, and it really makes it pretty clear where we have to spend our money versus where we'd like to spend our money. And I think the, the matrix is, is just really good in sort of evening out the priorities. And I know a small business owner, you know, we run into this all the time, where we're like, oh, when X case settles, you know, we're going to spend this money on XYZ, and we kind of, you know, it's like candy in the candy store, right? And really, we should be sitting there at the beginning of the year saying, what does our office need, regardless of what the funding is? What are the needs? And then if the funding comes in, we take care of those needs, rather than, oh, we just held a big case, how do we want to spend the money? Which is what I tend to do. I think so. I think you're going to force me to be, you know, more disciplined. I think it really does force us, force us, not that you guys haven't been disciplined in the past, but I really do think it, it forces us to be disciplined on an annual basis consistently. And hopefully, even if there's change in council personnel, this is our framework, unless there's a good reason to change the framework. It provides a framework, not just for future borough managers, for future borough council members. I think it's fantastic.
Thank you.
Alan, ready?
So, just been a pleasure working with Matt and staff on this plan. So I just have a framework to go off of, because I feel like before, like Gene said, I feel like it was not really well thought out, it seems, so this will make things a lot easier for us.
Yeah, keeps us all focused.
Yeah.
Agreed.
Well, it's like, I think you can attest to, teaching classes. The first semester you teach a class is the worst, because you have to build everything, building all of your material. I have built the material, right? From this way, at this point onward, it's just maintaining the system. Well, thank you.
Great. Thanks, Matt. We'll look forward to posting this online, so we can all refer to-
Great.
Then we'll move on to the consent agenda. Can I get a motion for approval?
Oh, and I want to announce that I am recused from which, oh, C on the consent agenda, because Jamie Day is my sister.
Well, are we, are we going to, then, one of you recuse yourself from the entire vote?
Yeah.
Sure. Yes. Recused on everything.
I don't think we're going to need to.
Yeah.
What good reason, though, for the-
Which way, which way would you have voted on your sister?
Yeah. Okay, can we get a motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda, so forth.
Second.
Great. Any questions or comments?
Yeah, you know what? I just want to thank our volunteers, who were appointing several people to boards and commissions, so thank you for stepping forward.
And thank you to Sally and Tom Gonzalez for their time. We're sorry to see them go, but appreciate their expertise. Great, can we get a vote? All those in favor? Six and one recusal. Great, thanks. We're going to move into an executive session now, so Alan, I ask you to put everyone in the waiting room except for Fred, and we'll ask the public to move out of the hallway. We will be back after we talk about point A, a lease renewal for a tenant, 201C.
Are you folks here for a particular item, or you're just-
Yes.
Which one's that?
Unfortunately, it's the last.
It'll go pretty quickly from this point on.
Yeah.
That would be the big, that was the big-
Sorry about that.
That's okay. Thanks for asking.
And you know what? We can move that up. What are the-
Up C. Oh, B and C.
Oh, yeah, that's kind of, okay. That's something quick. Jim, can you get that outside door?
Outside door, yeah. Stop this.
Okay, we can move back from executive session then, to item number 11, consideration items. Can I get a motion to approve payment number three?
Motion to approve payment number three for the 80-inch happening roof reinforcement project?
Yeah, gotta get a second.
I'll second that.
Great.
I'm sorry, because that's where they're like, she's written-
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We can reverse that, I'll second his.
I'll move that.
Some have folks and some don't have folks. Hold on.
Totally.
Okay, any discussion? Matt, you want to give us an update?
Uh, this is just the next payment in our roof reinforcement project. As you see through the pay application, number three, we are retaining about $12,000 for retainage. There is going to be, we still have about $200,000 left to pay, and expecting that the roof project will be completed, I'm hoping tomorrow. The final step is these tie rods that need to go into the structures that were constructed, and the tie rods with a turn buckle on them are what's actually going to make the systems work. So our structural engineer and project manager will be on site with the contractor tomorrow to install those tie rods. We'll have final payment, I expect, at the next business meeting.
Any questions? Okay, hearing none, let's take a vote. All those in favor? All right, great. Got seven votes, not opposed. Gene, you're up for D. Can I get a motion to approve the removal of restricted parks?
I move that borough council approve the removal of restricted two-hour residential parking from the even side of the 400 block of South Norwood Avenue.
Essex.
Did you mean Essex?
It was, it was, yeah.
I'm sorry.
It says Norwood.
South Essex Avenue.
It says Essex in mine.
Mine says Essex.
The commission had Norwood, it was a typo, so it's correct to Essex. Sorry.
Yeah, the plaque, it says exit, Essex. Okay. We have a second by, okay, discussion?
So, our current parking ordinance states that residents can petition council to remove or add parking, privileged parking to their block, so long as, in this case, if there are three or less than three residences along that block, they can go directly to council. It does not have to do a petition for 60% of the residents, nor does a traffic study. It is at the will of council. And so this is a pretty, I think it's a pretty easy request. There's only one house on the block, it's the person who is requesting it. It's the person who is requesting it. Yeah. Nothing further. I think the letter that's included in the back--
Says it all. Okay. Great. Any questions or comments for this?
Can I just ask, I mean, obviously, that makes sense, as you said, but the letter here shows that this person lives on Marion. Their address is on Marion. Their address is on Marion, yeah, right? But that South, the block of South Essex--
Right.
Is the side of their house. And there is no other house on that block. There's one across the street.
So their address is Marion.
Yeah.
So, okay, I mean, I understand it, but--
So who else would make that request since there's no address for that block of Essex?
Right.
That's where I was at, right? I was like, hmm. Right? Their address isn't there, but their door is actually on Essex.
And these are all the anomalies that we're going, yeah, that we're working through.
As will be the next one.
Yeah, exactly. Fred, any comments on this? No. Okay, then let's vote. All those in favor? Okay, same your names, that's seven pass. C, it's probably Gene is on.
I move that Borough Council approve the installation of restricted two-hour residential parking along the odd side of the 300 block of Price Avenue from Grayling Avenue to North Norbert Avenue.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Great. Okay, discussion?
So this is the opposite. There is a segment of a street that they have requested the addition of two-hour parking. Again, this is less than three, or there's three properties along that--
Four.
Four. Three that are addressed--
Four.
Four. Four along the property. So it can go before council.
Okay.
Unfortunately. Thank you.
Yep.
And it's not actually a request, it's actually a restoration.
Agreed. I did look at the Google Street View and did see the parking signs, historic parking signs back there.
For the last 40 years.
Yep. So it's just one of these things that got missed in our legislature--
Figuring it out. So this is something-- Yeah. Oh, there's more things to do. I appreciate that.
So could this potentially have just been dealt with with the office because it was already there?
Yeah, because it's in the--
Because it was [inaudible].
Right, we need to update that list.
Okay.
Yeah. This neighbor's got a fun night out because of it.
Everything about [inaudible].
Okay, all right, so let's take a vote. All those in favor? All right, okay, say no pose. We will say thank you for your patience in helping us figure this all out.
Thank you.
Sure.
Listen, I hear from [inaudible].
Bye, folks.
Thank you. Here, word was out that my capital improvement presentation--
That's very [inaudible].
Well, thank you.
I can tell your neighbors.
Bye, folks. Let's move to item D. Jim, you're on second.
Oh, I move that Borough Council approve the terms of the lease renewal for the Pure DME space located at 201 Sevan Avenue.
Great, can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, say vote. All those in favor? Say no pose, seven and passes. Let's move to E. Uh, Jim? Yep?
I move that Borough Council approve the terms of lease renewal for the Wonderspring Childcare Space located at 201 Sevan Avenue.
Great, can I get a second?
Second.
Thanks. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. Let's take a vote.
You know what? Do we want to summarize these for the public? I mean, this is actually a big chunk of money for the borough, this particular lease, so--
Yeah, so the first one, Pure DME, is a transfer of ownership. The business is selling. So the lease renewal is pretty much the same as the existing one with a 3% increase for a one-year term. Wonderspring Childcare Space, that is the large space where Wonderspring Childcare exists, that is for a three-year lease renewal.
Once we vote on it, is it considered final? Is it?
It is. We did receive a signed version from Wonderspring and Pure DME. So once council takes action, I will then sign and execute it. And once those are executed, we will post them on the website. They become public information.
So people who have been asking about the lease renewal for Wonderspring, you can tell them they're staying for--
Yes.
Thanks, Fred. That was a good point.
And, you know, we're happy to have them. We're happy to support quality childcare in the borough. I mean, we're not really supporting them, but we're happy to work with them to bring quality child support to the borough.
Okay, let's take a vote then. All those in favor? Okay, say no pose. Nonsense. Uh, X, Jim on two.
All right. You get it, Karen. I move that Borough Council approve the goals and objectives for the Norbert Planning Commission.
Second. All right, and Fred, maybe I'll ask for you to comment on this?
Sure. So Planning Commission had asked us for guidance about what they should be focusing on. You know, we just signed a contract with Montgomery County Planning Commission as well. So this is responding to the letters, the letter that they sent us outlining a number of different priorities. And we're asking them to look at-- So one of them is that we've passed a lot of legislation over the last few years, and it has created some problems in the code where there's conflict, conflicts. They've had some applicants come to them and different parts of the code say different things, or they've had them interpret. So trying to make sure that all of our code works together harmoniously. So we're asking them to look at possible, in particular, it's the Historic District Act and the incentives that we passed for green building, making sure those work with the existing parts of the code. I think those are the big changes. So we're asking them to look at that. And council members have also identified affordable housing as a major goal to look at for council in the next few years. So to do that, you know, Planning Commission is going to be our partner to consider what sorts of things we can do to help affordable housing in the borough. I think we've all looked and we've all seen, you know, million-dollar houses popping up or, you know, if you've checked Zillow lately for your own property, I mean, it's going to be flattering to your ego, but it's difficult for new residents to come in and face these prices. So it really limits who can, who can join the borough. And we'd like to, you know, keep it open for families with different income levels rather than just becoming a millionaire's club here in the borough. So asking them to look at affordable housing. Remind myself what else it says.
There's traffic [inaudible] one of the young ones.
That's right. They were asking about, so they were interested in looking at Montgomery Avenue, the traffic situation, the road, the streetscape situation, just the, it's kind of an under-- We spend a lot of time here thinking about the downtown, you know, thinking about what happens in the downtown, downtown businesses, downtown plans. But really, the Montgomery Avenue corridor is also an essential business corridor for the borough. And I think we all know that the traffic out there, it's happening just across the street. We know we're-- And the streetscape is not super appealing, right? I mean, you're, it doesn't feel like Norbert. It feels more like strip malls and more like highway culture elsewhere. It's just not the same. So looking at how to make the streetscape more welcoming for pedestrians and how to make it safer. And the trick there is that we have to collaborate with Lower Marion because they own the other half of Montgomery Avenue. And we have jointly put in a grant application to study the traffic safety along Montgomery Avenue. I think we should hear next month if we're going to get that grant or not. So I think we would like this, we would also like Planning Commission to look at, we agree that this is a priority, we'd like them to look at Montgomery Avenue, but in collaboration with Lower Marion. So we're going to need to wait on the grant. The Active Transportation Plan is also looking at Montgomery Avenue. It's going to come up with some recommendations. So I think it's premature for them to jump into this right now. And they should look into, they should reach out to Lower Marion and start working on, along with Lower Marion, especially once we have some clarity on whether this grant is coming in and recommendations from other studies. So premature, in my opinion, to jump into Montgomery Avenue right now. And then the Active Transportation Plan is also going to be coming with some infrastructure improvements, so more additions to the capital improvement plan. But I would anticipate that those recommendations are going to come to council rather than going through the Planning Commission. So if there's recommendations for specific projects, that'll, you know, come to staff and council to decide when and if they're going to go into the capital improvement plan.
And Fred, if I could--
Well, I think that's the outline. Yeah, go ahead, Cindy.
Just to put kind of a finer point on one of the comments specifically around affordable housing, because I think, you know, there's an interest to council, but it's not just individual council members, rather, we're taking our lead from our comprehensive plan and additionally, really reflecting some pretty active faith communities and outreach communities. You know, we have the Norbert Food Bank. We have St. Margaret's hosting a Ukrainian family coming and supporting that. We have Trinity Lutheran with a community garden. We have numerous outreach from the Norbert Habrat. I mean, this is not a council agenda, rather, I believe that we are reflecting the community's need and desire to have an inclusive, supportive community, which is why we're responding to that. In addition to folks' real concerns of, gosh, you can't buy a house under a million dollars anymore in Norbert, and that's not our history, that's not our roots. So asking the Planning Commission to be our partners in exploring how we reflect those community efforts and the comprehensive plan is our due diligence.
All right, I'll add one more thing, which is that I also ask Planning Commission to look at areas where our code specifies rules for building that would-- So if you look at some of our neighborhoods and some of our areas, there are parts of Norbert where like half of the houses are non-conforming because they're built on smaller lots than is allowed in code, or the frontage is different, or the setbacks. So we have a lot of buildings in Norbert that you couldn't build now under our current code. And, you know, if we're talking about safety, that's one thing, but if we're talking about lot sizes, you know, we ought to allow construction that looks like Norbert, that fits in with the rest of Norbert. And if we're prohibiting buildings that already exist in Norbert, you know, that's, there's a problem with the code, in my opinion. So I'm asking them to look at changing our specifications so that they reflect what we've already got in Norbert, the kinds of building that we already have.
Thanks, Andrew.
I would just like to add on to what you said, is that one of the goals that constantly is a constant refrain of this council and many past councils is we'd like people to be able to age in place. And sometimes, you know, asking seniors or older residents to, if they want, if they want to get out of their home and maybe go into something a little smaller, it's still very expensive. And if you're on limited income, you want to be able to keep family members who've been here a long time be able to stay here in the neighborhoods that they know and love.
Great point.
Thanks. I just want to comment on the affordable housing, I mean, because I know it can be a trigger for people about what it is and what it isn't. And I just want to be real clear that in my mind, when we're talking about affordable housing, we're talking about the kind of starter homes that people traditionally have been able to move into Norbert with a young family and not have a seven-figure income to be able to do that. And right now, I mean, the housing, the housing stock is extremely limited. And, you know, the idea that, I don't even know if you could buy a $300,000 twin in Norbert right now. And that's the kind of thing that we're talking about when we're talking about affordable housing. And Fred's right, you know? If we want that, we have to be deliberate about considering without, you know, over-increasing density, you know? I don't want people to panic and say, oh, Fred's saying, you know, like throw a whole bunch of, you know, buildings together, you know, on one lot. It's not necessarily about that, but it is being a little more deliberate in considering how we can, you know, create non-conforming uses that allow those young families to move into Norbert, because that's always what's made Norbert great is having lots of young families here. And I don't, you know, I talked to my colleague at work who's pregnant, and I'm like, oh, you should move to Norbert. And she just laughs at me. I like to think I pay her a decent salary, but, you know, like, I can't afford to live in Norbert. That's why I can't afford to live in Norbert.
Yeah, and this, well, and this is like a topic that anyone who knows me probably wants me to talk to them about less, because I never shut up about it. But this time, I'm very fortunate in that you and Fred already kind of said a lot of the things that I would have said, so I really appreciate what you guys outlined. And this will be the one time I will shut up about it.
Oh, wow. Lucky you have your expertise on this, that's for sure. And a reminder of our roots, of our history and our roots in Norbert and using that as a guide. So with all that said, can I get a vote on F? All those in favor to? Okay, you're down to seven. Hearing none. Let's move to G, which I believe is Jim.
Wow. Why don't I just do all of them?
Yeah.
I move that Borough Council approve the hiring of-- Oh, I had her name.
Kelsey Reimer.
Kelsey Reimer.
Reimer.
Kelsey, sorry, where is it?
Kelsey Reimer.
Okay, Kelsey Reimer. Let me do that again. I move that Borough Council approve the hiring of Kelsey Reimer for the position of Records Clerk Office Assistant.
Great, take a second.
Second.
Thank you. All right, Matt?
I am excited about this appointment and thank you for, thank you to council for considering it tonight. Kelsey, if approved, comes to us as a recent graduate of the Pennsylvania College of Art and Design and has a really different perspective coming into municipal work. I'm always looking to bring different perspectives into local government. There's very few of us who work in local government. And just knowing our needs, I'm really excited about increasing the administrative staff 25%. Historically, we've been a three-person shop downstairs. Now we're going to be a fourth person. This is, this is new for Norbert, and I'm really excited about what this is going to do for administrative operations. Kelsey's going to be the new face of the borough. She's going to be dealing with most of the, if not all, of the walk-in traffic and will be on the other end of all the phone calls. And this is really a unique situation for council to consider. Also, in that she's going to be working hand in hand with our police department to support administrative police initiatives. So Chief String is really excited, and it was unanimous, all three of us, Alan, Chief String, I, who interviewed her. Everybody we interviewed could do the job. They all had the skill set to do it. We were impressed by all of the five folks that we interviewed. And so we looked at what was the best fit, what were the other add-on skills that candidates could bring in, and really liked her design background and her ability to look at the graphic design of things and how to social media and market things. So we're really looking forward to being in front, start getting in front of that and start promoting the borough a little better.
That's great. We can stop saying, oh, Gene. So can I have a vote? All those in favor? Okay, say no pose.
I also want to just thank you, and this is conditioned upon her passing a criminal background investigation, fingerprinting, and a drug screening. Fingerprinting and criminal background investigation are required since she will be accessing police records.
Is there an expected start date?
We're hoping for August 5th.
Great, so maybe we can invite her to our office meeting so we can all kind of formally meet her again?
Okay, sure.
Perhaps, if she's interested? Great, thanks. Information items have been submitted. Any new business? And old business?
Who is here? I have a motion H here.
Uh, we moved that--
We did that earlier.
Yeah. Sorry, I should have pointed that out, Jim. Any comments for the go to council? Okay, then we're going to move into an executive session. We will not be coming back for any type of votes, where we will discuss a lease renewal